Good evening, everyone. Heavenly Father, we just thank you for this evening. We thank you for this moment that you've allowed us to gather, Lord. I thank you for a city council that still allows us to pray, Father, before their meetings. That you would bless each and every one of them, Lord, in all that they do. That your wisdom and your discernment, Father, would fall upon each and every one of them as they lead the city in their decision-making, Father, as they lead the city in the conversations that they have. That you would bless their homes, their marriages, Father, everything that they put their hands to. I speak agreement, Father, in this house. We know that you're a God of agreement, Lord, and there's power in agreement, Father. And you are a God of order, Father, a God that brings order out of the chaos, a God that brings light out of the darkness. The same way you parted the seas then, Father, I pray that you would part the seas today, the seas of division, Father. There would be no unwholesome talk in this place. That this talk here, the things that happen in this room would be blessed, that they would be pleasing to you, Lord. That there would be a hedge of protection and a stronghold around the city council, around the city, Father. That this would be a city, Father, that is a city built on a hill within the valley, a light that cannot be hidden, a city that people come to and not just come through, Father. We lift this city up in your glorious name. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
May I get the roll call? Here. Item four, consideration of the approval of the agenda. Do you have a motion? Councilmember Lambert?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make the motion to approve the agenda as read.
Thank you. Councilmember Jones?
I'll second that, Mayor.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Move on to item five, public forum. Members of the public may address the city council members on any item of public interest that is within the jurisdiction of the city council. This includes agenda and non-agenda items. No action will be taken on non-agenda items. Speakers are limited to a five-minute presentation. Detailed guidelines are posted on the city council chambers information table on the back. At this time, I'd like to invite the public to come forward and speak and just remind everyone to silence or turn off your cell phones.
Good evening, Mayor Alonson. Council Chris Sanz Santos here, representing the office of Congressman John Duarte. First off, our office would like to thank city manager Josh Pinaro for taking the time this afternoon to meet with myself, our district director and our new deputy chief of staff, Kyle Lombardi, who comes to us from former Speaker McCarthy's office to discuss legislative priorities for the city of Las Vanos. We look forward to working together to see how the congressman can help improve the quality of life for Las Vanos residents. Our office would also like to again congratulate Larry Arborelli III, a graduate of Las Vanos High School, as he is about to attend the United States Air Force Academy this fall. On Monday, our office hosted its annual service academy information night, along with the ceremony honoring last year's academy nominees, of which Larry was one of them, and Congressman Duarte was able to personally present him with a flag flown over the United States Capitol. Our office and the congressman wishes him the best of luck as he pursues this exciting endeavor, and we are confident that he'll represent Las Vanos in the Central Valley well. Congressman Duarte was honored to nominate six students to our nation's service academies last year. Five of those six were from right here in Merced County, and four of them are moving on to attend either the United States Air Force Academy or the United States Naval Academy in Annapolis this fall. As of June 1st, our academy nomination period for this year is now open, and if there's anyone interested in receiving a packet to pursue that nomination process through our office, we encourage them to go to duarte.house.gov, that's G-O-V, and call us to get a packet. We are asking everyone to turn them in by October. And speaking of the military, President Ronald Reagan once stated, "Veterans know better than anyone else the price of freedom, for they've suffered the scars of war." Congressman Duarte is proud to have recently voted for H.R. 8580, the Fiscal Year 2025 Military Construction Veterans Affairs and Related Agencies Appropriations Act. This bill honors our commitment to our nation's veterans by fully funding veterans' health care, benefits, and other VA programs. It bolsters our national security by reinforcing our strategic posture in the Indo-Pacific region so that our troops can better defend the United States and our allies, and it funds programs to improve the quality of life of military families. Specifically, when it comes to the Department of Veterans Affairs, this bill provides $337.4 billion for the VA to bolster vital programs, including the Atlas program, which we have right here at the Las Vanos Veterans Hall, and that's actually $75.5 million above the fiscal year '25 budget request and $30.2 billion above fiscal year '24. It fully funds veterans' medical care at $112.6 billion, and it provides $22.8 billion in advanced funding for the Toxic Exposures Fund. Congressman Duarte remains committed to ensuring that our values of veterans see more, not fewer, benefits. We ask any veterans in our district or Las Vanos who need assistance with the VA to visit our website at duarte.house.gov to find contact information for our district officers and our case workers. Thank you for your time.
Mr. Mayor, City Council, my name is Julian Villafanha. Field Representative for Assemblywoman Esmeralda Soria. We spent all day today meeting with stakeholders here in Los Baños. I can say that I fell in love with you guys' little town here. I'm usually passing through, and I got to spend some time with some constituents, say Hispanic, I'm sorry, Los Baños Chamber of Commerce. Did spend some time at your community center, visited you guys' police department, met with other stakeholders. Assemblywoman is very proud for all the work that's going on in this city. We will be here next Friday. We were hosting senior scammers with the Los Baños Police Department. I do have some flyers if I can leave them behind. We will be having more of a presence here in Los Baños. If there's anything that you guys need on your behalf, the Assemblywoman's office is always open. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Kathy Ballard, citizen of Las Vanos. I know you think I'm not a positive person, but I am to the people and staff that are accessible to me. With you on the dais, I only have five minutes, so I choose to use that time to express concerns and disappointments. There was a video posted by Brett and Josh, and the first thing I thought was, why? Why post our dirty laundry and make us look more like kids in a sandbox? If we have a problem with completion of a development, deal with it. Don't get the citizens riled up to what, I assume, assists you. Maybe this is why you're being recalled. You don't concern yourself with the people, only your, not all the people in your districts that you impact. Money is something that flows freely, except where it is most needed, to pay for hard-working employees that also include our police, fire, who protect us. Why reduce the budget in those areas? So we can put on a drone show, and I just found out it's $18,000. And a drone show, $18,000, payout 1.8 from our general fund, put in $3 million of pickleball court. You say the people who speak the most know the least. Why is that? Since I attend every meeting here, should I, I should have this knowledge. I shouldn't have to dig for it. It should be something presented at my city hall. I also wanted to know who filmed the video that was posted on Facebook? Was it Imagine Way More? Did I pay extra for that, for my city funds, or was that included in my $7,500 a month? These are questions I have and concerns I have. Thank you.
Cami Avilar? Pitzer Way? Homeless? So I have a few questions. I know that a large problem is the Martin versus Boise court case, which is coming back up and is back in court, and you're waiting for the outcome of that. But I do recall reading it that one of the stipulations on it was because it was so homeless people could stay, had the right to stay in a public place for sleeping, just for sleeping. It wasn't for building a home. It wasn't for homesteading. It wasn't for, you know, putting a mailbox out and collecting your mail. We have a new person on the trail behind me. He now has a drum set with, complete with cymbals. It's like, this is not, I'm here just to sleep. This is, I'm here making a home. They don't pay taxes. They don't, why do they have more rights than I do? I do believe we can do something, and based on that premise, you know, there's people who have encampments that are 50, 60 feet long. That's not just a place to sleep. So I urge you, I encourage you to try and find some other place to put them. The trailer park had them for a year. We have now had them for a year. I feel it's someone else's turn to have them for a year. We're gonna build the tiny homes, 50 of them. It's awesome. It's great. But the people behind me are pretty hardcore opposed-to-rules people. They're not gonna go live in a tiny home. They're not gonna go live someplace where they have to adhere to rules. That's the reason that they're there. So we have to come up with a solution that works for all of us, or at least works for us. At this point, I'm sorry, but I just don't really care about their rights because they're trampling on mine. So I encourage you to find somewhere else for them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, City Council, staff, members of the public, good evening. I just want to give an update on the proposed roundabout at Highway 152 and Volta Road. This is a, I guess, California Caltransis District, we're District 10. The project is in its very early stages. The environmental impact studies have not been completed. In July of 2025, a public input outreach will take place. That's where we can voice our concerns. In early 2026, a right-of-way certificate will be sought, the project will be listed, and a contract awarded. In the spring of 2027, construction is set to begin. They are gonna have a website, which is specifically dedicated to this project, which will have, provide updates and timelines. So again, that's something that affects a great majority of our residents, and I dare say probably the majority, as they may travel that using, for personal or business purposes throughout the year. Last council meeting, we, there was a question about the $200,000 and a $100,000 transfer limit for the city manager. Now, correct me if I'm wrong, but according to the information that I have, this was changed in June of 21 of 2023 during the council meeting, and the resolution number was 6657. Prior to this council meeting, the limits were 100,000 and 50,000 respectively, and those resolutions were 6518 on 6/15/2022, 6377 on 6/21/2021, 6231 on 6/17/2020, and so on and so forth. So again, if I'm wrong, please let me know, and I'll correct myself immediately. Homeless, I was wondering if we can get an update, again, to the grant. We're supposed to have updates and community outreach meetings so that the public can participate in the development of that program or those tiny homes where they're supposed to be, et cetera. The ANZA, I'd like some kind of an update as to where we are with that. Again, that affects our children, especially in the winter months, visibility, there's mud, it's an unimproved area. And again, we're not looking for pointing fingers. We'd just like to have that done, and also an update as to where we are with that. Another item was, some folks had asked me about the two housing or homeless positions that the city has. There's a question as to when they were appointed and by whom. The two positions are Housing Program Manager and the Housing, the Homeless Outreach Coordinator. Those two positions were approved during the city council meeting dated November 16th, 2022, by interim city manager Greg Wellman. Again, provided the November 16th, 2022 for those two positions. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I always get nervous. Hi, my name is Blanch and I live in the downtown area in District 4. I wanted to go ahead and let you guys know that just a short time ago, a few days ago, we worked alongside, of course, using the UC Davis Grant that was, and we're coordinating with the police department, the animal shelter, code enforcement division, as well as Feral Freedom and the Friends of the Los Vanos Animals. We were able to, and every time that we do this, which is about every two weeks, we go ahead and we actually spay and neuter 55 animals on a regular basis, and it's been ongoing. So we are continually to do our work. Set that aside, I'd like to talk to you guys about an event that is being planned. Please save the date. It's called a Tale to Remember Wine Walk. It's gonna be Friday, August 2nd, from 6 to 9:00, and the tickets will go on sale on July 1st. The tickets will be limited, so don't wait too long to get yours. We'd love to have you guys there. Hosting the benefactors of this is actually going to be the Friends of the Los Vanos Animals. So we are really proud that, for this recognition and for the guidance that these businesses are doing. The downtown businesses are Azul Rustica, Biggins Texas Barbecue, Donna Mendez Positive Changes, Flor Del Lee, Gomes Travel Planners, Dream Vacations, Health Time, the Los Vanos Chamber of Commerce, the Los Vanos Treasures, and we've got also Perle. It's a salon and boutique downtown, and then also the Country Duck. We're excited for this. We are gonna continue to assist our city and our animals, and we're grateful for the togetherness of what we're doing. Fourth of July, one last note. If you can mention it to others, Fourth of July is coming. There are people that are testing fireworks as we speak. I really appreciate the, or we appreciate, the progress of everyone that is trying to catch those that are illegally throwing off fireworks, practicing before the big day, because it does affect our animals. It does affect our seniors and our veterans. So once again, fireworks do harm our animals, which then again harms our shelter because all those animals want to escape the pain, and they end up in our shelters, so they end up running loose. But thank you if you could pass those words around and save the date for this wonderful event. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Armando Ruiz. My English is not that good. The official helped me to translate. Okay. Voy a ser breve nomas. Yo quiero saber que me expliquen como una niña de kinder, porque están, porque son los aumentos del agua y lo demás con números. Lo quiero que si me lo pueden explicar.
I'm gonna be brief with you guys. I do have a few questions. I want you to explain to me like if I was in kindergarten. Like I mentioned, I do have a few questions here. I wanna see in writing and in numbers.
También estoy desde hace como un año la presión del agua donde yo vivo está más bajita. No sé cuál sea el problema o dónde lo pueda discutir, o si sea por el aumento de casas, o me gustaría también saber por qué.
I've been living at my residence for approximately one year. The pressure of the water has reduced within the last year. My question is, did the pressure of the water reduce because of new housing or what's going on?
Y también si el aumento tiene que ver porque hicieron más casas y tienen que cambiar la infraestructura de la que ya está.
Also, with the raising of the prices of the water, is it because of the new homes or is it because you guys have to change the infrastructure of the piping?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, my name is Sarah Edwards. I want to bring up cyberbullying once again. It's going on in the city of Las Vanos. I wish somebody would actually seriously take it seriously because, like, my family is getting death threats and everything. I'm getting a death threat, killing yourself. That isn't something I take as a joke. That's not funny. It's going on in the neighborhood I live in, and multiple times I've come up to the cops and nobody seems to want to do anything about it. You know, they just look the other way, basically, is what it seems like to me. So cyberbullying leads to suicide, and I really wish somebody would start taking it seriously because I'm really tired of being threatened in the city, and I didn't do anything wrong. So anyway, thank you.
Thank you.
Buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Terrio Ochoa, y yo soy promotor de aquí de este pueblo. Soy la voz de mi comunidad, y la razón por la cual estoy aquí es porque no estamos de acuerdo que sigan subiendo el agua y el drenaje y la basura porque ya el cheque ya no nos alcanza. Ustedes saben que el agua que recibe este condado de Merced es el agua más contaminada de todo el estado de California, entonces pues no es justo que le suban a pesar de que es el agua más mala que tenemos. Nosotros estamos listos para que ustedes trabajen, para trabajar con ustedes para parar esta proposición y llegar a un acuerdo. Gracias.
Good afternoon. My name is Terrio Ochoa. I am the voice here in the community where I live at. I'm a migrant. The reason I'm here is because I am not, I don't like the proposition that you guys are talking about, about raising the prices of the water and the garbage. This is, in the city of Las Vanos and the county of Merced, we have water that's very contaminated, and we are not doing anything to fix that problem. I'm here in order for you guys to talk to me and talk to the community in, in order for us to actually do some stuff here in the city of Las Vanos. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
I missed you. I thought it was seven o'clock. Mayor, council members and esteemed others, my name is Jerry Geisel, resident of Los Manos, and I'm here tonight to find out why the minutes are not available on the city website. I'm aware you cannot show past minutes until approved by the following meeting, but the minutes from May to February are not available for regular city council and planning commission meetings. It appears to be just a simple housekeeping matter, I hope, that should be easily corrected. Please excuse me if I don't stay for the full meeting because by the looks of it, it'll be past my bedtime. So I think the citizens of Los Manos would appreciate seeing other than something coming up soon, and thank you for your time.
Just to clarify, planning commission minutes or city council?
Both.
Both, okay.
Both. If you go back to February, they're missing, it says coming soon. And I know you've had a couple on here, I know you've been doing a lot of things, but if you just look into that on here, I think it's staff positions. Simple correction, just so it's available to the public so they know what's happening so I don't have to hear hearsay, I don't have to look in the paper to see what it said, and I can look for the bona fide minutes. Thank you very much.
Perfect, thank you. Anyone else? All right, seeing none, I'll close the public forum. Let's move on to item six, consideration of the approval of the consent agenda.
Items on the consent agenda are as follows. Warrant numbers 245598 through 245882 in the amount of $2,629,442.95. City Council Resolution Number 6784, approving the increase in expenditures related to excess grant funding through a UC Davis Grant Program in the amount of $20,000 for fiscal year 2023-2024. City Council Resolution Number 6785, adopting a list of projects for fiscal year 2024-2025 funded by SB1, the Road Repair and Accountability Act of 2017. City Council Resolution Number 6786, authorizing that the design build delivery method be used for the new fire station number four project and addendum number one of the veneer construction management professional services agreement be entered into and that the city manager shall execute said addendum and the public works director, city engineer will administer said addendum. City Council Resolution Number 6787, approving a cost share agreement between the city of Los Manos and the Los Manos Unified School District for public improvements for the early learning center B Street Drainage Ditch Project. City Council Resolution Number 6788, accepting the SR152 Signal Synchronization Federal Aid Project CML 5160028 as complete and authorizing the filing of a notice of completion with the Merced County Recorder. City Council Resolution Number 6789, authorizing the city manager to execute the First Amendment to the professional services agreement with Corolla Engineers Inc. for the storm drain system master plan update not to exceed $44,600. City Council Resolution Number 6790, approving and adopting final track map number 2021-01 Quail Meadows Villages at Stone Creek Five Phase One Unit One, Lodi Development Inc. City Council Resolution Number 6791, authorizing the city manager to execute professional services agreements and the public works director, city engineer to execute individual professional services agreements with Govea Engineering Inc., Stan Tech, Precision Civil Engineering, Provost and Pritchard Consulting Group, Odell Engineering, Willdan Engineering, Mark Thomas and Company, and SNG and Associates Inc. for on-call engineering services for a period of five years, July 1st, 2024 through June 30th, 2029, not to exceed $500,000 for each agreement per fiscal year. City Council Resolution Number 6792, accepting the 2022-2023 fiscal year audit reports consisting of the annual comprehensive financial report and the government auditing standards report. City Council Resolution Number 6793, approving and authorizing the city manager to execute an amendment to the professional services agreement for auditing services for the fiscal year 2023-2024 audit period with Price Page and Company for a one-year extension not to exceed $82,570. City Council Resolution Number 6794, approving a tentative agreement memorandum of understanding by and between the city of Los Manos and the Los Manos Police Sergeants Association from July 1st, 2024 through June 30th, 2027. City Council Resolution Number 6795, amending Division Four salary schedule, employee classifications of the city's policy and procedures manual relating to changes to Section G police associated with the LBPSA tentative agreements memorandums of understanding. City Council Resolution Number 6796, amending Division Five personnel benefits of the city's policy and procedures manual relating to changes to monthly health, vision, dental, life insurance coverage allowances as it pertains to unrepresented miscellaneous employees. And the items are to be approved as submitted.
All right, thank you. Any, any members of council wishing to discuss any of these items? Councilmember Lewis.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I'd like to request item 6GHIJK be pulled for discussion.
Six H, or I'm sorry.
G as George, H, I, J, K.
K. Anyone else? All right, let's start with the G.
So this would be directed to our public works director. In the background, our report indicates that a storm drain master plan was completed in 2008 and an amendment in 2010. And today we're asked to spend $44,000 for a storm drain operation evaluation. So could you tell me if that's something that should have or could have been asked for back in 2008 and, or is this something new that has developed with the master, with the master plan?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, members of council, back in, the answer is no. The, what we're, the city's presently, currently facing is the further identification and treatment of other underground chemicals. Also passed in 2014 was the Sustainability Groundwater Management Act, which is manages, which directs all agencies to monitor and manage their groundwater. So we're being more scrupulously looked at in terms of how much water we take out of the, the quantity of water we take from the basin as well as the quality. So that was not the case in 2008. That's the current case today. So we're being pressed for our underground water and we're wanting to look at opportunities at the surface. And so this, this amendment would allow us to take that look. That was not the case four years ago and it was not the case in 2008.
And this is in reference to our underground water or our surface water?
Well, our, our surface water. This is to, we're having to look for new sources of water. The management of our storm drain, our rainwater is a possible resource for us to use as credits for surface water and treat it at the surface and provide water for the city. The underground water, we do currently pump from underground, we're going to continue, but it's getting more and more like limited and restricted, like I mentioned, on both quality and quantity. So we're looking for additional resources and this is the opportunity to look for additional resources.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we can move to the next one. This is item number 6H. And I'm going to the conditions of approval. And it's on page 135 in regards to landscaping. There's a master plan that's developed for any projects that, that are being developed in our community regarding to housing. But number 91 speaks to, the applicant shall submit a landscape and irrigation plan with each phase of the improvement plan for the city review and approval of streetscape, landscape. So what I'm understanding with this is that each phase of the development as it's being developed, a developer puts in the landscape at that point rather than landscaping everything for that particular master plan?
I believe it's as the, that specific project with those range of homes that are developed, that's what the landscaping is for. And they're either to provide it and or bond for it as, as each phase develops.
Well, I guess I'm concerned because, you know, I hear council members complaining about landscape not being put in, and so it seems to me, here's an opportunity where we have a master plan project that's about to be developed, and it doesn't matter to me who the developer is, that that landscaping be done at the onset of, of the project rather than as you phase and go along. Because what happens and what I've seen happen over time is that landscaping dies and then we end up being the caretakers of the project at the end of the road and we have to put the landscape in. Whereas when the developer is working on this project and building homes, if a, if the landscape dies or for some reason doesn't exist anymore, then it's their responsibility to put it in. So I guess I'm just concerned why we're still doing this phasing stuff rather than having developers put the landscape in right up front and have them be responsible for it until the project is completed.
Yes, ma'am. I believe in the prior ones, we were not administering the landscape as the project went through. This, this is the way you'd normally do it when you establish conditions, you ask for the landscaping up front, it's installed and or bonded. I'm relatively new here, I don't believe that was, has been administered that way in the past. And that may be some of the reasons why we're having to follow up and get landscaping in. But the normal course of development is to require this develop, require this condition and the landscaping goes in as the projects go in.
I just want to, and, and again, I just want to just chime in really quick. I 100% agree with her on this. I really think that, my expectation is we need to frontload all of these expectations to the developer and leave very little leeway for anybody to either change their mind, back out, because again, people are buying these homes and this is what they're, the expectation of what they're buying. So, so yeah, I'm 100% on board with this.
And, and I want to preface it that I'm not picking on any one developer. I know that this has been the standard in our city, but it, it doesn't seem to be working anymore. And this is supposed to be a phase one of, of this project. Now, I don't know how many phases there, there are going to be, and when I looked at the map in here, that there, I don't know if all of this that's on the map is the entire project or if the map is just showing phase one. I, I'm not quite sure what it is, and maybe you could educate me on that as to whether or not the map that's included is just phase one or if it's the entire project.
Yes, yes, ma'am, it is phase one.
So the final map for consideration is for phase one, but on page 137, it is an exhibit of the tentative map, which is all of Villages Five.
So that's the entire project?
That's the entire project.
Okay. And are, are, is the city aware of what's going to be public landscape in this project to date?
Absolutely. That was adopted through a final development plan adopted by the city council when this project was adopted. Condition number 91 is set in place, just as you stated, Councilmember Lewis, as you can remember, during the recession, the city was extended far beyond our capacity of maintenance when developments stalled and we had landscaping and irrigation in place that then the city did not have assessments to cover, right? We didn't have the landscape and lighting districts to be able to cover that, that maintenance of those landscape areas. This condition requires then that with each phase, the landscaping is completed. And in some cases though, in the past, this has been deferred. And if that condition is deferred, the condition is, is to be completed, but that sometimes does get deferred. It is based on the discretion of the city engineer historically, but I can say with the authority of our city manager, he does not allow deferral of irrigation or landscaping. And our new city engineer also does, we are on the same page, he does not allow that to happen. So it is done with each phase so that the city does not get overextended. So this is a standard condition for all developments post-recession.
Okay, so as each phase starts then, before the houses, houses are, are being built, the public landscape is put in place?
No, it is landscape and irrigation. So this, so what this condition is saying is that the applicant shall submit landscape and irrigation plans with each phase of the improvement plans for city review and approval of streetscape landscaping. So it just says with each phase, they have to submit their landscape and lighting plans. Now with the final map, the, the applicant either needs to put in those improvements with that phase or bond if those improvements are not completed. So those improvements either need to be in place or bonded for with that phase, including landscaping.
So is that in this document that we're looking at tonight, what you just said?
Yes, it is.
Could you, could you show me which number it is?
It's not a condition of approval, it's within the body of the staff report and within the subdivision improvement agreement. That actually walks through the improvements that have been completed and what is to be bonded for.
And really quick, I'm gonna go to Councilmember Jones.
Thank you, Mayor. I do share the same sentiment here with the landscaping not going in in a reasonable manner. Correct me if I'm wrong, some of these phases, they don't have the infrastructure to them to be able to complete all the landscaping up front, just only during, as they're building out. So they don't have roads, they don't have water, they don't have sidewalks or even the roughens for it, right? So you can't do it all at one shot, you gotta do it as you develop out.
Right. And, and that is true. And then in addition to that, the, the developer, once those improvements are installed and accepted by the city, then there's a warranty bond typically for a year. And after that year and that improvement has been completed and satisfied, the city is obligated to release that bond. So if there are no houses and we are then accepting the maintenance without any assessment to help, help with that maintenance, then, then the city is, really, there's an issue that occurs and which we experienced during the recession.
So if we require the developer to build out too much too fast, then we take on that burden of financing that landscaping or the maintenance of it, and if we don't have enough assessment on it, we'd have to borrow from the general fund potentially to, to take care of it for how many years it could take, could be 10 plus years, maybe longer, and then have to wait for reimbursement later on.
Right.
If we overbuilt it.
Right.
Okay.
I'm gonna go back, I'll go back to you.
I would like to see in the future just a little bit more strength on these developments as far as the landscaping making. as far as the landscaping, making sure that before they go on to like, say, additional phases, whatever landscaping was required is done and is up and running. Because as we've seen in some neighborhoods, we have land for parks, but we don't have the parks yet in there. And we got residents that have purchased the homes with the anticipation of using the parks and other common area landscaping. And it's just, it's something that we're struggling with right now with trying to get them in in a timely fashion. So I'd like to make sure in the future going forward that we have some sort of safeguards in place to where we don't build out the whole project and missing some key components like parks.
Councilmember Lewis.
Yeah.
Mayor, I would like to make a request that I be able to finish my questions before you move on to another council member. I'd appreciate that. Well, I hadn't even finished. And and then you asked a question and you turned it over to Councilmember Jones. So I'm just asking for the order of the meeting. If if a council member has the floor, let them finish their questions and then you can move on to someone else.
I guess I'll just tell you my goal. My goal is to create a dialogue amongst all of us.
But I had the floor and you took the floor away from me.
Sorry you feel that way.
No, it's 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 the Robert's Rules of Order. I had the floor. Okay. So at in this particular case, we're going to still follow this procedure under the current conditions of approval. And then there's another side agreement that you have in regards to this phasing process.
Also, Councilmember Lewis, to answer a previous question, back on page 118 is a series of paragraphs in the agreement that obligate the developer to put in improvements in the public right of way and have the city enforce it. So starting with that page and paragraph 13, there's several conditions that require improvements in the public right of way. And those within those are the improvements include landscaping.
Okay. All right. Thank you for the answers on that one. And if any other council member has questions on that one, I'll relinquish the floor.
I didn't know that was part of Robert's Rules of Order. Anybody else on on each? Moving on to item I.
Thank you. It's it's a matter of clarification for me. When I was reading the staff report on the on page 140, there were eight companies that were named as firms. But in the second paragraph, it indicates that there were five firms for a period of five years. So I'm trying to clarify, are we going to hire eight firms? Are we hiring five firms?
I'm sorry, ma'am, councilmember, council, it's it's eight firms.
Eight firms, okay.
They're a paragraph there.
Of the eight, it's not to exceed $500,000 per fiscal year per firm?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. All right, that's it. I have on that one. Well, item K is very extensive. This is the second year that
J.
J, I'm sorry, item J, that the company Price Page and Company, who has been our auditor to do our audit of our finances for the city, has not come and presented a report to the city of Los Banos. The city is acting as a third party to make the report for for them. And, you know, I'm not a financial person, but there there's a lot of stuff in here that I would have liked to see them explain to us. This is on a consent agenda where it normally is not. And and just looking at some of the numbers, and again, I'm not professing to be a financial person, but I see a lot of variance, final budgeting information where the numbers are in brackets, which, you know, I've always been told that's a negative amount of amount of money. So can someone give me a briefing on this report and tell me kind of in general, what's going on, what the findings were and what these negative amounts mean if I'm looking at it in the right direction?
Thank you. Good evening, councilmembers, mayor. Which page number are you referring to for the brackets?
There are several. There's page 210. And I didn't highlight all the pages, 217. Page 218, 19.
Got it.
Page 257, 259. And I didn't highlight every negative bracket because it would have been too many. But those are some that I found.
I see.
Thank you.
Mayor, the company Price Page and Company are auditor, are independent auditors that were scheduled to be here tonight. However, due to unforeseen circumstances and the welcoming of their, a new baby for one of the partners, they were not able to come to our meeting. Basically, we do have, we're presenting this financial report for the fiscal year ending to of June 30th, 2023 to the council to accept the the annual comprehensive finance finance report. It is a clean audit that the auditors have performed following government accounting standards and and accounting principles. This is a, and and just to provide some of the highlights for this audit, the report says that in our general fund, we have we have a $40 million of of reserves. This reserves are broken down into assigned and committed. So those are those reserves, we are unable to spend them in anything else that the council has already approved to spend them on. However, in unassigned or discretionary reserves, there is 30 million, $31 million, which is well above the the dollars or the percentages that the council has recommended for the city to have as a reserve in their reserve policy of 30%. From the fiscal year 22 to fiscal year 2023, we are showing that the general fund balance reserved increased by $2.6 million. Many of the brackets, there are differences because the budget, it is an estimation for the year. However, if we have higher revenues coming in or other expenditures, they they are going to to show those variances. But at the end of the, at at the end of this report, a report shows that our city has a very strong financial, financial statements of a clean record and that we are well positioned and in into managing the funds responsibly, being prudent with how we're spending our money. And it showed, it's shown by the by the $2.6 million that we are moved or we are putting back into the reserves.
Did you have another question?
Oh, I I didn't know that she was finished.
Oh.
So you said that these were estimates of their finding? I thought these were these were supposed to be actuals of their audit.
Oh, the the pages that you're referring, some of the pages that you're referring to, they're comparing the budgeted amounts to the final actual numbers. So those are going to, they compare, our financial report compares to what we have budgeted and to what really happened in the year. And some of those amounts would be would have differences. That's normal.
Okay, so at 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 the end of the road, basically, if it's in the negative, we under we underestimated what we were going to be spending in that particular area.
Or if it's positive, we we, if it's positive, we underestimate it. If it's negative, we over.
Yeah, I'm more concerned about the negative, yes.
We have not, yeah, we may have not spent the money.
Okay, well, it's it's a very in-depth, complicated report. And certainly, it brought pause to me to see that if, you know, the original calculations and the finals and the actuals ended up putting a lot of, you know, what we had done in the negative. You know, I I certainly can't figure this out as to where it where it all ends up and and how it calculates out at the end of the road. But that, you know, that that was a real big concern for me is to see so many negatives. I I wish that the staff from from the company was able to be here tonight and answer those questions for us. But they're not, so thank you for your answers.
Councilmember Lambert.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I, and when I looked through it too, of course, you know, the numbers are mind blowing to me because that's not my job. But at the end of the year, the audit or going through the year, we're always going to see those ups and downs of the deficits and then positives throughout as I kind of read on some of them, like when some of the ARBA went through. But at the end of the year, end of the year, we were not in the negative, correct?
That is correct. If you see the page that we're referring to, page 257. Yes, we definitely, we had a revenue projection of 29 million. We received actual numbers of 27 million. Our expenditures were 30 million, but we only spent 24 million. So yes, at the end of the day, at the end of the year, we finished the year in a positive with a $2.6 million back to the general fund.
Okay, and that's why we have you doing our job, doing your job, what we do. Also, at the end of the the report, it has our final report right here on the end of it. And basically, that's all I needed because they said we met the guidelines of everything and exceeded our our audit. Kudos to our finance department and our department team. Thank you.
Anything else? No. Yeah, so I guess my my question's more of a summary question. When I looked at the information, basically what it told me is, you know, budget means hope and plan. So we hope and plan to spend this. This is what we estimate. This is what the strategic planning of things. We fixed a record number of roads. We spent money on projects. We did a whole lot of work. And at the end of the day, even with a conservative policy on how much money we have to save, we met that goal as well while getting things done and still had money left over. Is that accurate? Thank you. Any other questions on this one? Moving on to item K. Councilmember Lewis.
Thank you. Okay, so item K is requesting the authorization to a one-year contract with Price Page and Company. The city had a five-year contract with them with the agreement of an additional two-year extension. So last year, when, last year was, I believe, the second year of the extension that we were in with Price Page. And I'm I'm kind of wondering why we didn't put out an RFP after we finished last year's audit to get a company on board and not have to have a one-year extension here with this company. I I I would hope that staff would have known that the contract was up and that the two-year extension period was up. But we did not move forward after last year's audit, which was finished, I think, sometime in December, to start moving forward to put a RFP out to look at hiring either a new company, the same company, or what have you.
Yes, thank you. The audit was completed May 31st, 2024. And during the last year, we can't close the books on June 30, 2023. We have to go through a process of accruing revenue. There are still payments that come through that of charges and and things that happened in June 30 of 2023 that we are probably paying them in July because because companies bill us and they send us their their invoices. So we have, we have, we have up until July or August to still make payments for the fiscal year of 2023. And and we start closing and doing all of our closing entries in the September timeframe. In and around that time as well, I am, I'm aware the city was also going through a financial systems update. We're still configuring some of those phases. And in in this contract year two, it is for a, the company is is auditing until they finish. It's not, it's not that the contract is is it expire on June 30. They are supposed to audit the year ending on June June 30. And they're going to audit until they until they complete the audit. And this audit was just was completed in May of 2024. And in between our system upgrade and the workings of of this project, the city was not able to do the RFP. When we are, when we have done the RFP for this for this audit, we normally do it within a nine, nine-month timeframe just because the for the policies that we have to advertise the 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 RFP and and evaluation and bringing it to council. And then we, whoever, whatever firm we select, they have to put us in their schedule to 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 do this audit. We connected with knowing, knowing all of this, knowing all of these factors that 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 came about with with City of Los Banos completing the audit in May, doing this financial system upgrade. We connected with Price Page and Company, asked them if they would be able to put us in the in their schedule for this year with a one-year extension. So that way it can give us that that time for us to do the the proper way, do it the proper way, put the RFP. And and by next year, we will be able to bring full, bring forward a, an item to council with a recommendation after we 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 followed the process of the RFP.
So I I'm still kind of confused because the two-year extension ended with this year's audit.
Correct.
And so now we're asking for another year's extension. So they'll be in the middle of an audit. And you also indicated, if my memory serves me correctly, that something about payments. And I I don't understand how that has anything to do with putting out a RFP when you know that your contract is expired and, you know, looking for a new company. So there, you know, we're asking for another year's extension. They're going to be working on the audit. So we have to find another company in the middle of them working on an audit. I don't know how that would have been different for us to do it this year.
Absolutely. That's what we're asking right now. We're asking for a year's extension so they can audit the fiscal year ending in 2024. So in two weeks.
Yeah.
And in within that timeframe, we're also going to move forward and put out an RFP.
Right. But this audit that we have before us, it was ending in December of 2023. However long it took them to get that done, which according to the report was May of this year.
Correct.
I don't understand what that has to do with us putting out an RFP knowing that we needed to hire another company and get them on schedule. So, I mean, it is what it is at this time. We're going to be in the same position next year. And I I'm hoping that they'll agree to the one-year extension and that we will be diligent to get a company on board for whatever term that we need to complete our audits. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for the time.
Yeah, question on the on the RFP process. Do we have a city policy on how this is done?
It is part of the ordinance, the purchasing policy ordinance on our municipal code.
Okay, and are we within policy?
I'm sorry?
Are we within policy?
Bringing this amendment, it it put us within policy.
Thank you. Councilmember Lambert.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Ms. Vanessa. So during this audit, we actually are being audited continuously, correct?
We are mandated to have. We are mandated to have, to have our books audited every year.
So basically, if we really, would we have been able to get it started? Because if we would have lost them, we wouldn't have had nobody. If we were doing the RFP, if we would have dropped them, we wouldn't have had nobody that would have been able to continuously audit us, correct?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Anything else on item K? Do we want to vote on them all in one motion? All right. Do I have a motion on the consent agenda? Councilmember Jones.
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda estimated.
Councilmember Begonia. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion passed. Thank you. Let's move on to item seven, the public hearing. Future challenge of proposed action is described herein in court. You may be limited to raising only those issues you or someone else raised at the public hearing described herein or in written correspondence delivered to the city at or prior to the public hearing. Move on to item 7A, public hearing to receive public comment and consideration of a five-year water, wastewater, and solid waste rate program adjustment for all residents and commercial customers.
Thank you, Mayor. That would be my item, and I have a presentation for us.
We'll call you up.
Oh, thank you. I have this. Perfect. And it's a connect. Okay, perfect. This is the public hearing, the Proposition 218, to establish the rates for water, wastewater, and solid waste. In tonight's presentation, I will be walking you through a background of the Proposition 218, the process, the 2024 rate increases proposed, a five-year projection of this rate increases, and we will move forward to hold the, to holding the public hearing. The Proposition 218, what it is, it's a voter initiative adopted in 1996. It basically establishes the procedures for local governments to be able to impose fees for certain services. In this case, it would be for water, sewer, and solid waste. It's utility rates, it states that utility rates must be fair and equitable among all of the ratepayers. So no one ratepayer can be subsidizing any other household or commercial or industrial. It has to be equitable. And it is also a tool designed to provide greater public involvement in the rate-setting process. Therefore, we have this public hearing letting the public come and provide comments and voice any of their thoughts, inquiries during this process. The Proposition 218 process, in order for the city to move forward with this public hearing tonight, there is certain procedures that are established by the law. And one of them is for us to bring forward an item to the council to initiate the Proposition 218 process. That item was brought over to council and it was approved back in April 17, 2024. From that process, we are mandated to mail notices to the property owners, informing them of our, of our intent to raise the rates, provide the new, provide them with what the new rate is. And this has to be mailed to those, to the property owners at least 45 days before the public hearing takes place. The public notice to our ratepayers, it was mailed to them on May 1, 2024. And 45 days from May 1, it brings us to Saturday, June 15 of 2024, which puts us in line with the date for our council meeting tonight to hold this public hearing. Also, the public hearing notice was put, it was published in the newspaper on April 29 and June 6 of this year. The methodology that the city has used in order to calculate or bring forward this rate increase is, it's the same methodology that we have used back in 2019 when we increased the rates prior. That we adopted the rates for a period of five years, and that is the maximum that we can propose per the, per the, per the law passed in 1996. So in 2019, these rates were adopted from July 2019 through July 2023. In this case, we are proposing that we are adopting rates for effective July 2024, and they will be in place through July 2028. In 2019, the methodology used the inflator. It was adopted to use the San Francisco's cost price index as the annual inflator. We are also proposing that we use the same CPI to increase the rates for, to continue to increase the rates for the water, sewer, and garbage. And the increase by the inflator, there was a clause, a cap, that it was not to exceed 3.5% any given year. We are also following that methodology and including in this report that the inflator is not to exceed 3.5% at any given year. Our rate increases are needed so we can continue to provide water, sewer, and solid waste services to our customers. The city is requesting to increase this rate so we are able to keep up with increases in salaries, benefits, regular maintenance operations, electricity costs, supplies, the chemicals that we're using in order to treat the, the water sewer systems and pay for the lab and the lab and the consultants that, that, the contracts that we engage in in order to keep the reporting mandates for water and sewer up to date. Within the methodology for 2019, we use the February price CPI as the indicator for us to be able to, to recommend to council to use the, to use to increase the rates. So in 2024, the February CPI percentage, it's 2.4. And that is the recommendation of staff to go ahead, to increase the rate effective July, July 1, 2024. This rate increase is the equivalent of $2.44 total for all of the city's services, for water, sewer, and solid waste. And as you can see in the chart, currently, our current rates are $101.57. The proposed rates would be $104.01 per month. And you can see the difference between, it would be an increase of 59 cents in water, 76 cents in wastewater, and $1.09 in solid waste. This, this, this rates will help us with, with many of the capital improvement projects that we have scheduled for the fiscal year and within the five-year project that, that we have presented to council back in our budget hearing. And some of those are going to be the usual, the water valve replacement projects. We have new meters that we have to purchase. We have to do, we are doing the water lines in different areas of the cities. We are doing also fencing and water tank updates. And in wastewater, we are, we are also doing a levy assessment. We are implementing utility domains. We are doing an upgrade to the system that it's used to report the, the, to report numbers and to keep, to give the gauges of what the wastewater treatment is producing and the capacity and so forth, or its cleaning, its maintaining. And, and the same thing for the solid waste. We are using some of these funds to replace one of the sweepers in, in, for our street sweeping unit. The chart that you, that you see here is a comparison of the, of our water, sewer, and garbage rates with all of the other cities in Merced County. And as you can see, our, the first bar is the current rate that we charge for all these three services, $101.57. It is below the, the current charges for water and wastewater and solid waste for, in comparison to all of the other cities in, in Merced County. And the darker orange bar, it is the proposed new rate effective July 1, 2024 of $104.01. And you can also see that it will still be below the current charges that are being paid for water, sewer, and wastewater in the Merced County cities. A projection for the next five years of what we're proposing. In fiscal year 2024, the CPI increase that we propose, it's 2.4. And that is the equivalent of an increase of the water rates of $2.44. And the following fiscal years, '26, '27, '28, and '29, those are looking at what would be the maximum rate that we would charge. At 3.5, the maximum cap, it's showing what that increase would be. However, if the February index in 2025 or 2026, it's lower than that 3.5, we would be recommending that percentage. So right now, we are showing you this projection of what is the max using the cap of 3.5. Our recommendation for tonight, it's for council to hold the public hearing to accept the comments from our public hearing session. We also tabulate the written protest that instructions were given at the time when we sent out the public hearing notice to the property owners. And once we close the public hearing, we are asking and recommending that we adopt the resolutions submitted. That concludes my report.
All right, thank you for that. I refer to our city attorney.
Mr. Mayor, council, before you open the public hearing, I'd like to read the following comments for the benefit of those who are here tonight. The purpose of the public hearing is for the city council to hear and consider all protests and objections concerning the proposed rate increases that you were given a summary of just now. Property owners and tenants directly liable for the payment of water, wastewater, or solid waste service fees are not required to provide oral testimony tonight in order to submit a written protest to the rate increases. If you wish, you may simply submit your written protest directly to the city clerk at tonight's hearing. If you wish your protest to be counted, you must submit a written protest prior to the close of the public hearing tonight. The public hearing will be closed after the city council has heard and considered all oral testimony on the proposed increases. Oral protests at the podium will be heard but cannot be counted in determining whether a majority protest exists.
All right. I will now open the, the public hearing. As you come forward to speak, please identify yourself and your address, and you will have the customary five minutes to speak.
John Lapini, 847 Fritz Drive. We're in the gated community, Four Seasons, Los Banos, so we're a little bit different. Nobody can tell me what my water rate is because we don't have water meters. We're not family dwellings. We're a 55 and older community. So it'd be nice to know how our water rates or where we fit here. And we're not an apartment complex. So I couldn't get an answer. Second, under, utility rates must be fair and equitable amongst all ratepayers. In the sewer division, the poop division, we pay for our sewers. Residents pay, property owners pay for their sewers. It maintains the sewer. Four Seasons, Los Banos, we maintain our own sewer lift station. City knows how much that costs. We have 135 homes paying for that. The city has 18 homes hooked up to our sewer lift station. Is it a memorandum of understanding paying us for that service of transferring solid waste for city residents to your sewer system? They're in our lighting district. Their addresses are 729 and 725 Maryland, 724, 728, 725, 729 Pennsylvania, 724, 728, 725, 729 Vermont, 724, 728 Colorado, 512, 518, and 506 Colorado. Those three were taken off septic tanks and put into our sewer system. We're in HOA, and we charge our members an HOA fee. That's how we pay for our maintenance of our sewer. You're asking us to pay more for the maintenance of your sewer. We're handling the sewer waste of 18 of your residents, and either you haven't paid us in 17 years or no one knows there's a memorandum of understanding, or we're getting screwed. So I'm against the rate increase until that's figured out. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Ann McCauley, 1868 Chapman Drive. I'm not here to protest because I know things go up and everybody has, you know, whatever concerns, and that's, that's fine. I just want to know what the rationale is for using a San Francisco CPI. Is there any other CPI we could have used? I'm just questioning that because I, you know, I've not noted that before. And then, so the 2.4%, is that San Francisco CPI this year? Or is that just something that we determined the percentage for this year? Little clarification. And then, and it's good to know how some of these projects are going to be paid using these funds, as our finance director had mentioned. Now, when we talk about some of the hazardous materials, chemicals that are in our water, and I can't remember the one that, is it HCLC or something? I can't remember that one. I'm just curious how that one is paid. Is that a separate budget that takes care of that? That's basically what I want to know. But otherwise, you know, I don't have a problem with the rate increase. I know some people do, but just having, just knowing how these percentages were derived is helpful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, excuse me, Rafael Yamas, 1844 College Green Drive. Reading the, the legis, from the Legislative Analyst Office, this, these increases are supposed to be just for the payment of what it costs to provide the service. There can't be any overages. In other words, just using round numbers, if it costs $100, there can't be $105 in increases because the intent of this law was to curb some abuses by municipalities of charging specific property-related fees in order to cover other general type of expenses from the city. So do we have those numbers? Do we know exactly what it costs to provide the service? And do we know what these rate increases are going to generate in revenue? Two, did I understand correctly that the city is going to purchase a street sweeper? Mrs. Portillo?
Just ask your question, and then we'll get through the questions.
Well, I thought it was, that's what it was.
Just five minutes, and then we'll go through the questions. Yep, just five minutes, and then we'll go through the questions.
I'm sorry, my misunderstanding, I'm sorry. If that's the case, then I think that falls under the general services, which is specifically not allowed under Proposition 218. So again, we're using these property-related fees in order to pay for general services, which again is not allowed. So I would ask that this be taken back into consideration because again, there's potentially some violation there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Kami Avalar, 1810 Pitts Way. I had the same question that the other lady had about the CPI and why we're using San Francisco, Oakland, Hayward when we're not even closely related to those counties. And then statistically, how often it was a generalized 3.5%, but how often, you know, give or take, does that really, does it exceed or actually does it go below?
It stays below.
It typically is below?
It has to stay below.
Right, but, but it was generalized, okay, it's going to be based on this, and if it goes below, but how often does that happen? I can't imagine it's very often that it goes below. So five years, a rate increase, five more years, a rate increase. So technically, every single year, we can expect a rate increase for all three of these services is what it sounds like. I do protest that because typically, if I get something that's increased, and I know there's, there's costs, but if I have something that increase every single year for me that I'm paying for, I'll generally go out and try and find some other provider for that service, but we cannot do that. We are citizens and stuck with what we have. So a couple of questions, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Again, if you do not wish to speak at today's hearing but would like to submit written protest to any of the proposed rate increases, you may do so at any time before the close of the public hearing. The city clerk is available to accept any written protest throughout the public hearing. So before I say last call. All right, seeing no others wish to speak on the matters, I'm prepared to close the public hearing. However, before I do that, like provide anyone who would like to submit or withdraw any written protests. Not seeing any. All right. So can we go through some of these questions?
Absolutely. I, to address the question about the CPI being chosen for the San Francisco Oakland area, it has been determined that it's the closest area that, that, that we can use as an annual indicator for the increases. It's very different. The other areas are the Los Angeles CPI and Orange County. Those are very different areas. This has been determined to be the closest and most reasonable area to choose for this CPI inflator increase. And if it goes, if it, if the 3.5, the cap, if it's exceeded or if it goes below, just as an example for this year's of 2024, we have a cap in 2024 of a 3.5 inflator, but we're actually recommending to increase the rates by a 2.4%. So it does go below, and we do, we will be bringing those, we will be sharing, it's mandated that we let the residents know 30 days before the rate increase goes into place. We will be noticing them of what that indicator, that inflator will be. So in the question, if it's ever exceeded, it could be exceeded, but we have the cap of charging 3.5. So we, if at any given time, the inflation rate, the CPI rate, it's 4.3, our cap is 3.5.
For the five years, correct?
For the five years. And in the question, if it goes below, the example is this year, we have a cap of 3.5. We are recommending to increase the rates by 2.4. In, in the...
The street sweeper.
The street sweeper, the, the street sweeping unit, it's part of our solid waste unit, and therefore, the, this charges are, are combined to provide the services of waste collection. It's collecting the waste from, from the streets.
And then, in regards to the issue at the Four Seasons, how do we, how do we, how do we get into that? How do we, because again, those are extremely valid.
Yeah, I would have to research that item.
Okay, and again, again, I know that that's the, that's, that's a combination of, of things that we need to, to look into, so. And then, another question was, yeah, based on the CPI, so what are the CPIs used in California? Is it Southern California, Northern California?
So we have San Diego, you have San Francisco, which is our closest one, you have Los Angeles and Riverside. And within those ones, they have a couple other cities attached to them as well. But normally, you pick the one that's closest to your area.
So not a Fresno and...
Even though it may not be related at all, you've still got to go with the closest one.
Okay. I think that was it. Is that all the, the questions? Okay. Councilmember loose?
So my question would be for the gentleman who is from the Cajunian senior community and the surrounding homes from the state streets that he's indicated are attached to their sewer system. I know our staff has to research it. How can we assure an answer back to him for his question?
Yeah. If we could collect your contact information. Yeah.
Thank you.
Quick question. You may not know, but, but what was our rate increase just for a dollar amount in the previous from 2019 to last year?
So the last year's increase was 3.5%.
2.5?
Yes.
So it's been going on everything?
Yes, that's correct.
I remember it was about five years ago when we voted this in, the rate cap. Before that, we looked at, it was easy to approve the rate cap because years prior, they showed a graph, and some years, I think there was like 7% increase, 9%, I think even one year, there was like 11% increase. And then you'd have some low years too as well. So instead of, you know, shaking everybody around with highs and lows, it was just slow and steady was the thought of having the rate cap on it. So, yeah, I think if we're only at 2.4 this year, which is somewhat surprising considering how the state's going, that's pretty amazing. So I would have figured we'd be well over that amount, that 3.5. So, good job.
Thank you. Can you pull up the slide again comparing us to other cities?
It's, oh.
What jumped out at me was don't move to outwater if you want cheaper water. So looking at this, and again, to correct me if I'm wrong, we are the, currently the lowest paying customer rate in the county.
That is correct.
Okay.
At the current rate and at the proposed rate.
At the proposed rate as well. So even with this $30 per year increase in the first year going up. And did this compare the same type of formula back from 2019? Were these pretty much the same in the current one we're in now, the five years?
I'm sorry.
They're further apart.
Oh, gotcha, gotcha. Okay, okay. So based on this, because, you know, and just before I got into this position, I always had questions about our waters and, and, you know, what makes the toilet flush and what everybody has to do and how many intricate parts that go into this. And what's always kind of surprised me is, you know, we've had issues with water, and we've had issues with wastewater and things like that, but if we're the absolute lowest paid in the county, but we're the second largest city in the county, well, that tells me where the problem is. We're not investing enough into it. And again, I know nobody wants their bill to go up. I don't want my bill to go up, but I do understand the formula behind it. And again, we're doing it in manageable increments, which is like $2.40 a month. So I, so I understand it from that, that point of view. And I also, again, understand the opposition, and to be honest, I didn't really hear like opposition. I just heard, I have questions. Make me, make me kind of understand it. So thank you for, for providing that, that information. Any other questions from council? No? All right. So move on to, it is item 7A1. Oops, I've got to keep going. All right, so what we're going to do now is we're going to take a five-minute recess and hereby direct the city clerk and city staff to complete the tabulation of the written protests received. So we'll come back at 7:40. protests received. So we'll come back at 7:40. Call the meeting back to order. All right. And I direct the city clerk to provide the city council with the results of the tabulation of the written protests received prior to the close of the public hearing.
In regard to the proposed rates for the city's water service fees, a majority owners of the identified parcels would equal 6,815. Four written protests were submitted by owners of the identified parcels and/or any tenants directly liable for the payment of water service fees. A majority protest does not exist, and the city council may proceed to consider the proposed resolution number 6797, establishing rates for water service fees. And that's, would you like me to read all three or? Okay. In regard to the proposed rates for the city's water service, wastewater service fees, a majority owners of the identified parcels would equal 6,815. Three written protests were submitted by owners of the identified parcels and/or any tenants directly liable for the payment of wastewater service fees. A majority protest does not exist, and the city council may proceed to consider the proposed resolution number 6798, establishing rates for wastewater service fees. In regard to the proposed rates for the city's solid waste service fees, a majority of owners of the identified parcels would equal 6,815. Four written protests were submitted by owners of the identified parcels and/or any tenants directly liable for the payment of solid waste services. A majority protest does not exist, and the city council may proceed to consider the proposed resolution number 6799, establishing rates for solid waste service fees.
All right. The city clerk has advised us that a majority protest does not exist for the adoption of the proposed rate increase to the water wastewater and solid waste service fees. The city council will now consider the adoption of the proposed rate increase. Do any members of council wish to speak on items 8A2 through 4? All right. Seeing none. City council will now consider items 7A1. Do I have a motion? Councilmember Lambert.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to adopt resolution number 6797 as read.
Thank you. Councilmember Jones. Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Lambert, Begonia.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Lewis, Yannis.
Yes. Moving on to 8A2. Councilmember Begonia.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt city resolution number 6798 as submitted.
Thank you. Councilmember Jones.
I'll second that.
All right. Can I get a roll call vote?
Lambert, Begonia, Jones.
Yes.
Lewis, Yannis.
Yes. And item 8A3. Councilmember Lambert.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to adopt resolution number 6799 as read.
Thank you. Councilmember Begonia.
Second the motion.
All right. And roll call vote.
Lambert, Begonia.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Lewis, Yannis.
Yes. All right. Thank you, everyone. Let's move on to item eight, or I'm sorry, item nine. Oh, oh, no, yeah, I was right. Eight. Consideration adoption of city council resolution number 6800, referral to the Merced County Local Agency Formation Commission, LAFCO, for the detachment of properties from the Central California Irrigation District. For this, we'll go to Community and Economic Development Director, Suzanne.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and city council. This particular item is in partnership with the Central California Irrigation District, CCID. This is really a housekeeping item that I'm actually excited to bring forward to you because this has been, since the beginning of my career, that I have been partnering with CCID to clean up parcels that are located within the city's limits that are still within CCID's irrigation district. So this item is being brought before you because we are asking for a resolution from the city council for a referral for detachment, which needs to go through Merced County LAFCO, and this would be to detach, it's about 72 parcels that are located within the city limits of the city of Los Vanas from CCID. And this would only affect those parcels that are currently in city limits that are developed or are not in agricultural production. Also, parcels were not, property owners were not forced. I know, I don't see a representative here from CCID as they are the lead in this process, and the city is just a partner and supportive of this. Property owners are not forced, but CCID, if your property is located in city limits and you're still a part of their district, they did encourage property owners to detach. There will be a process. There's a public hearing process that will happen through LAFCO. But city staff, we are supportive, just because historically, since the city was incorporated, parcels, for whatever reason, some were left in, some were taken out. The city's policy has been, and this follows, it's actually CCID's policy, that at annexation, then the parcel is detached from the irrigation district, which is a special district, and attached to city services, or the city of Los Vanas. Now, this has nothing to do with city water. Those parcels that are in city limits that are already connected to city water, which is domestic water, receiving potable water, this, this does not impair their service with the city of Los Vanas. Actually, most of these parcels, the 72 that are identified, there is a map attached on page 433 that identifies the properties that will be detached. These are all properties that are in development or soon to be in development. So they've already been developed out. One of the areas I can point out to you is Walgreens, for instance. When that was annexed into the city, that should have been detached from CCID, but it's still within their irrigation district. They do not irrigate. They do not have agricultural crops, and it's not necessary for them to stay within the district. So that is the purpose before this, for this item before you tonight. Like I said, this is a partnership with CCID. It's something that we've been working on for a long time. The city of Newman just recently went through this cleanup process through Stanislaus LAFCO. So, which CCID worked on that, and we are taking their, their leadership and also trying to pursue the cleanup within the city of Los Vanas as well. And that concludes my report.
All right. Questions from council? Councilmember Jones?
Yeah, I'm happy to see this on here. I know this was something that CCID's wanted for a long time, and we didn't really know where to kind of start on it or where it kind of fell under, but I'm glad it, we are able to give this recommendation over to LAFCO to get it cleaned up and hopefully moving forward. Because even Home Depot is one of the parcels that are still in it too as well. So it's just something that's been overlooked, and we don't know where it got overlooked, or how, or whose responsibility it was. And I'm just happy that it's being taken care of. So, great job. And I know this took a lot of work on CCID to get this straightened out and brought forward, probably many, many years of working on it to bring it forward. So anyways, thank you.
Councilmember Lewis.
Thank you. You know, the map is a little bit hard to read, but I counted X amount of orange spaces, but there are a bunch of little dots in there. Do those dots represent the parcels that are being detached?
Yes, yes. So that is where the number 72 comes from.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor.
Yep.
If I may add, I cannot conclude this item without thanking CCID, specifically Jarrett Martin, the general manager, and Maria Fadema-Sacquera, their assessor. I've worked closely with Maria, like I said, since the beginning of my career with the city of Los Vanas and this housekeeping item. And there's been countless hours just putting this packet together and identifying the parcels that need to be detached. CCID also did outreach and public meetings with the property owners in advance of of this item, and I'm glad to see this come to an end.
Councilmember Jones.
And I think there's one more name behind the scenes that was working diligently on this. Correct me if I'm wrong, Bill Nichols of CCID.
Yeah. So Bill Nicholson is LAFCO, Merced County LAFCO. Yes. So he'll be the, he's the executive director of Merced County LAFCO, and that's who we will be taking this item to. And yes, we have had his guidance through this process as well. Thank you. Councilmember Jones.
All right. Do I have a motion? Councilmember Lambert.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve our adopt resolution number 6800 as read.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Councilmember Jones?
Yes, Mayor, I'll second that.
All those in favor? Aye. Motion passes. Thank you. All right. Let's move on to item nine. Consideration adoption of city council resolution number 6801, approving the transportation impact analysis guidelines dated April 29, 2024. For this, we'll also go back to Community and Economic Development Director, Suzanne.
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor. So I am going to defer this item to Ian Barnes from Farron Peers. They are the traffic engineering consulting team that we have working on our traffic master plan. And these traffic impact, the transportation impact analysis guidelines are a task within the transportation master plan. And so with that, I'm going to turn it over to Ian. Oh, here's the clicker for Ian. We have a PowerPoint presentation for you.
Always need the clicker. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. As Director Elms noted, my name is Ian Barnes. I'm a principal transportation engineer with Farron Peers, the Stockton office. As Stacy noted, the goal of this effort before you tonight is to standardize the way that traffic consultants such as myself and others prepare traffic impact studies for projects throughout the city going forward. A couple of key initial takeaways. So right now, the city does, currently does not have standard practices for traffic studies. So studies are being conducted on a case-by-case basis for land use projects, for example. Studies go forth to the Public Works Department and the Planning Department, at which time they have to review the scope, provide comment, and the methodologies may be different from a study-by-study basis. So the goal of this effort is to standardize the preparation of these studies in three key areas. The first is congestion-based level of service analysis. This is your traditional traffic operations analysis. How does a project affect traffic operations, say, on Pacheco Boulevard or Mercy Springs Road? The second item is a California Environmental Quality Act, or SEQA, required vehicle miles traveled analysis. This is a new part of traffic studies, or relatively new. So we'll talk a little bit about that further in some detail in the middle of the presentation. And finally, there are other required SEQA analyses related to the pedestrian bicycle and transit system, looking at safety or hazardous conditions, as well as emergency vehicle access, as is generally required under SEQA. So starting with level of service analysis. So a quick refresher on what level of service is. That's our grading system of how congested a roadway system is. We start with level of service A, which is the least congested operations, and work all the way down to level of service F, which is overcapacity conditions, or a lot of people say failing for grade F. Level of service E is at capacity operations. That's where it's about ready to tip into congestion. The city's general plan policy, which is policy C-P2.1, is to maintain level of service D, or better, at intersections, and level of service C, or better, on roadway segments. If you've seen traffic studies before, level of service used to be the basis of the way that we did SEQA analyses, or traffic studies under SEQA. There was a law that was passed in 2013 called Senate Bill 743 that took a long time to become effective, but on July 1, 2020, became effective. What that essentially did was it removed level of service from SEQA and installed VMT as the SEQA transportation metric. However, that law did not change a agency's ability to require analysis relative to circulation element goals and policies, and thus being able to place conditions of approval on projects relative to goals and policies. So the city does have an existing policy, C-P2.2, to require a level of service analysis or a traffic study in general, if a project generates more than 100 peak hour trips, so 100 vehicles leaving or arriving at a site in either the morning or afternoon peak periods of travel. So the guidelines outline a number of consistent criteria that studies going forward must follow. So for example, if a study is ultimately required, that study would require the study of intersections where 50 or more peak hour trips are added, focused on arterial to arterial, arterial collector, arterial local, or collector-local intersections. That's a traffic engineering way of saying the major roadways in the city. City staff have the discretion to add locations based on community concern or other safety aspects. Study a morning and afternoon peak hour analysis. Use updated traffic counts that actually look, that actually reflect the current conditions out there today. Use the latest edition of the Highway Capacity Manual. That's our manual of equations that's usually applied in computer programs these days to help evaluate traffic operations at intersections. And then study three typical time horizons, existing conditions, near-term conditions, that's existing, plus any projects that have been approved recently, and cumulative conditions, which is general plan build-out. These procedures are typical for central and northern California. Southern California requires a different set of analysis because there's so much traffic, but everything here is generally consistent with the way that traffic studies are prepared throughout everywhere north of the grapevine. So after going through the traffic study calculation process, we look back to those general plan goals and policies to evaluate whether or not a project has to sponsor improvements in relation to how they affect the operations of the transportation system. For signalized intersections, if a project, if an intersection is operating acceptably, so level of service A, B, C, or D before the project, and the project causes it to tip beyond level of service D, so level of service E or F, that's a new deficiency. tip beyond level of service D, so level of service E or F, that's a new deficiency relative to general plan goals and policies, and thus the project would be would be required to sponsor improvements. If a project's already deficient, it's operating at level of service E or F, we look at, we look at a slightly different way of it. We look at it at a delay change of five or more seconds. For unsignalized intersections, like site street stop, uh, it's the same kind of idea where if it's operating acceptably before and the project causes it to tip over, that's a new deficiency, improvements would be required. Same thing if it's already deficient, that delay change of five or more seconds would trigger the need for an improvement. But because stop signs are usually upgrade them to a traffic signal, we add another criteria that uh affects kind of both conditions, which is the peak hour signal warrant must be met. That's a standardized set of equations that help us determine if there's enough traffic volume at the intersection to warrant a signal. And again, these procedures are typical for central and and northern California. They would then also allow uh city staff to then to determine conditions of approval for projects going forward. So that's congestion analysis. So now we're going to hop into SEQA uh VMT analysis. We have a couple of slides just on key policy aspects and then a quick refresher on what VMT is and how we measure it before we get into the thresholds of significance. So I will spare you the the readout of all the text there on screen, um, but the general idea here from SEQA guideline section one five oh six four point seven um is that if you're going to be using the same thresholds of significance over and over again, as we typically do under SEQA, they need to be adopted by ordinance, rule statute, as part of a public process, such as one here tonight. Those thresholds need to be based on evidence relative to the state laws that put them into place in the first place. So in our case, Senate Bill seven forty-three. The city, in its capacity as a lead agency under SEQA, can look at other thresholds or thresholds of significance adopted by other agencies, or the evidence put forward by other agencies, such as the state of California. This adoption process is part of settled case law, uh, the twenty eighteen decision, the Golden Door case, as we call it. Unadopted thresholds are ripe for challenge these days, and we're starting to see uh enterprising land use attorneys look at those going forward. So by adopting uh guidelines, you protect yourself relative to that established court precedence. So again, uh, VMT analysis required by Senate Bill seven forty-three, which came into force on July one twenty twenty. The law has three main legislative intent items. One is to promote healthy communities through promoting active transportation, so walking and biking, promoting infill development, and helping the state uh uh meet its uh legislatively mandated greenhouse gas reduction targets. The governor's office of planning and research, understanding that going from congestion-based analysis to VMT, big change in the traffic study world, uh, put out a technical advisory back in twenty eighteen with with recommendations for VMT metrics, methodologies, thresholds, and screening criteria. Basically, the state gave the book of evidence for agencies throughout the state to adopt if they so choose to do so. I would also just note that the OPR technical advisory has not, has yet to be successfully challenged in court, so it is a bastion of stability in an otherwise uh unstable traffic study world. So uh, what is VMT? Um, so VMT, vehicle miles traveled, looks at the amount of driving. So for example, if you have one car going one mile, one mile times one car, one VMT. If you have four cars going ten miles, four cars times ten miles, forty VMT. Frequently, um, we'll end up dividing this VMT number by uh the number of people in a residential area or what have us. VMT is measured typically using travel demand models. We have a picture of that there on the right. That's for the city of Citrus Heights, but it's a computer model that looks at all the land use in a city, looks at all the roadways, and tracks the amount of trips driving over those links, so that we're tracking driving over distance, vehicle miles traveled. So what does VMT mean kind of in our daily lives? So imagine you have uh Joe or Jane here at home. They drive two miles in the morning to go grab coffee, ten miles to go to work, and then another eleven miles to go home. Then maybe later in the day, they travel one mile to go get gas, another three miles to go to the grocery store, and then two miles to come home. So John or Jane here drove twenty-nine miles, or twenty-nine VMT. What we'll see here in the following slides is that depending on the land use project type, we'll only look at certain parts of the VMT throughout the day, just related. And the reason for that is how travel demand models work and how those trips are tracked in the model. So metrics, what do we end up measuring here as part of the VMT analysis process? So uh, the state gave three overarching, general guiding ideas for projects going forward. The first is for residential projects. So for here, we'd look at home-based VMT per resident. So the amount of driving to and from houses in a residential development divided by the number of people in that development. For office or industrial or employment-focused process, we're looking at the commute trips and dividing by the number of employees at that business. Retail projects are a little bit different, and the state recognized that they want to be able to promote a diversity of goods and services. Um, so another way to think about that is if the city only had one gas station, and everybody has to drive to that gas station, it's on the one side of town. If you built a second gas station on the other side of town, yeah, that gas station's going to generate VMT, but the overall net effect is going to be a lowering of VMT because not everybody has to go drive across town. So that's why retail projects, we look at a net change in total VMT. So with that background in mind, in OPR's review of all the climate evidence, they determined that new development would need to be fifteen percent more VMT efficient for residential and employment projects in order for the state to meet all the intents of the legislation. So when you see these eighty-five percent numbers come up, that's what we're saying is that fifteen percent number just being translated into a threshold. So for residential projects, the proposed threshold of significance as recommended by OPR is eighty-five percent of the baseline or existing conditions, citywide average home-based VMT per resident. That is a bit of a mouthful. In this case, when we say baseline, we mean when a project environmental analysis starts, that's when the baseline has started. That new development would need to be fifteen percent uh better off than the average at the citywide level in order to not require mitigation measures. The state gave residential projects two options for incorporated cities. The first is a citywide average. The second is a regional average, which is tied back to the Metropolitan Planning Organization or MPO level. Merced County, MCAG is your MPO, so it's a single county average. Um, the reason why uh in discussions with the city, the citywide average was chosen for residential projects is because of the presence of super commuters. If you end up using a countywide average, it's likely that the average gets pulled lower by all the cities on the Highway ninety-nine corridor that don't have the same prevalence of super commuters. So if we ended up with a city with a countywide average, it would be a lot more stringent for residential projects going forward. For employment projects, uh, it's eighty, the threshold is eighty-five percent of baseline Merced County average commute VMT per employee. OPR gave no citywide average um option for employment projects. And that's really kind of on the basis of we have people who have very long commutes within a, within an MPO, and in a lot of cases, people are driving city by city for their commute trips. And finally, for retail projects, knowing that one's a little bit different, that's looking at a net increase in total VMT within the project's area of influence. So if a retail project increases overall kind of VMT in the region, that would be considered an impact. And so mitigation would be required if a project is in excess of these thresholds of significance. Unfortunately, I glossed over one point of the previ, of the previous slide, and that is these metrics are what are going to be evaluated using a city of Los Banos version of the MCAG travel demand model, which we are, uh, Farron Peers is hoping to wrap up for city's use here in the next couple of weeks. And finally, last but not least, uh, multimodal SEQA analysis. Again, this is looking on at the project's effects on other modes of travel. Typically, in more suburban jurisdictions, we're trying to evaluate whether or not a project's going to preclude a sidewalk being built or preclude a planned bike lane being built. So that's more about the built environment. Similarly, we need to check for hazardous geometric features for a site, either onsite or on the project's frontage. Usually, that kind of comes down to, do you have offset driveways? You have one driveway that's existing, and the project has another driveway that's kind of awkwardly offset. That can be a potentially a safety issue, and so we have to evaluate that under SEQA. And finally, looking at emergency access for adequacy. Can a fire truck get around the site? Can an ambulance access all the properties easily? Just making sure that things are safe there. So I think with that, I turn it back over to Stacy.
All right, any uh, any questions from council? Councilmember Lewis?
Thank you. Um, well, on your, your last sentence about uh fire engines and our, our public safety being able to maneuver on streets, um, we have a lot of older neighborhoods where back in the early two thousand, the model for building streets for calming purposes was really narrow. And um, it, it doesn't even allow two cars to pass by each other. Um, you, you have vehicles parked on the streets on both sides, and, you know, I, I would assume just barely a fire engine might be able to get through. So what would, what would a recommendation be to mitigate something like that? Would it be painting the curb red on one side, or what would your organization recommend for that?
Well, so that's a, that's an existing item there, and I think I defer it over to uh Mr. Bergson over there for a, a few initial thoughts. If you, if you would, because uh he's a, this, this is more about future development than the exact, than the uh current built environment.
Okay.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, uh, members of council, uh, with specific to the uh narrow streets, that's um, I know it's been done in the past, but yeah, uh, red, red painting one side would be a method. Uh, and I think few, going forward, we don't, we don't advocate uh streets that narrow. Uh, they should be enough for parking both sides and adequate for passing of two lanes.
And I, and I think that uh, you know, that's definitely a conversation to engage with fire department on as well as as public works. That's usually how I've seen that be rectified in other agencies. Thank you.
Uh, and, and we have actually corrected that in recent council meetings with new adoptions of the, the widening of streets and whatnot. Um, couple of questions. One, a couple of things in your model, um, and I do sit on MCAG, so I do know way more about VMT than I should, but thank you for the information tonight. Um, one thing that's kind of interesting, in your model, uh, do schools play a factor?
Yes, they do. So the way that schools are generally modeled in the, in the MCAG model historically has been um, the, the input into the model is enrollment. So as part of the larger TM, uh, transportation master plan, we have been asked to study a number of intersections around schools. Um, certainly, I think in interacting with city staff in the past, as we've kind of helped them review some traffic studies completed by others, intersections near schools have definitely come up as a major priority item.
Okay, yeah, and, and again, I, I bring it up just because of, of, you know, Councilmember Lewis discussing streets and emergencies. Getting a fire truck by one of our schools between two and three o'clock, I know is not going to happen, um, so I know there's some, some things we can address. And then the other question I had is when you guys do the model for residential, do you take into account at all a single-family home with more than one family living in it?
Yes, so to the degree that that's being modeled by the US Census, that's a major data point. And so, as we just had a census update and that data got released, I think, last year finally, that would be input into the model development process.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Jones?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I, I think this program's great, uh, so now we don't have to shoot in the dark when we're planning, we can actually see what the traffic impact's going to be and how, you know, we can make decisions on whether or not it's going to be a good fit for that area, so.
Yeah, well, uh, I will, I will leave the, the concept of a good fit to the city council, but at least uh studies would be done on a consistent basis going forward, and um study intersection selection would be done objectively based on the number of trips, and then also it provides city staff with a very clear path to make sure that uh pressing issues raised by the community are being, being addressed in the study.
Yeah, because one intersection that stands out is uh Place Road and East B Street. Uh, when the schools get out at the same time, it's just gridlocked in there, and it's just takes forty minutes to get from one, one end of the block to the other.
Yeah.
So, excellent.
In making your models for the city, will you be able to have um some video, some three-dimensional, something so that we could see how the traffic model works, rather than just, you know, written down on paper, so we can visually see what it is that you're proposing and talking about?
Yeah, so um, two, two answers to that question. Uh, one, when we're talking about the model for this purpose, we're talking about the travel demand model, which is looking at the overall volume on the roadway. We will be doing some traffic operations analysis as part of the transportation master plan. I believe it's thirty-five intersections throughout the city. Uh, while we're not currently scoped to do video animations, that's something that potentially we could do uh down the line if directed to by the city.
I, I think it's important for the council to be able, if, if we're uh sitting here in the position of legislatively approving this, it, it, to me, it would be important to see that, uh, and I hope that staff is going to work that uh in their proposal with your company in order that uh we can make the appropriate decisions in that modeling. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
So I'm, I'm actually going to disagree with that, and I'll tell you why. Um, I, I, I don't think we need to spend more money. You're the expert. If you tell us this is our grade, we should trust you and go with our grade, but that's, 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 that's my opinion on that. So any other questions? No? Okay, thank you. Do I have a motion? Councilmember Jones?
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve city council resolution number six eight zero one estimated.
Thank you. Councilmember Lambert?
I'll second.
All right, all those in favor? Aye. Motion passes, thank you. Move on to item ten, cancellation of the regular city council meeting scheduled for Wednesday, July third, twenty twenty-four, due to the Fourth of July holiday. Do I have a motion? Councilmember Lambert?
Motion.
Councilmember Begonia?
I'll second.
All right, all those in favor? Aye. Motion passes. All right. Uh, item eleven, advisement of public notices. We have three reports for this. Go to community and economic development director Susan.
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor. Uh, so the first item is for a tentative parcel map. This is located um on the southwest corner of Ward Road and Pacheco Boulevard. It consists of twenty-seven point ten acres, proposed to be uh subdivided into five parcels with a remainder. Uh, it is zoned highway commercial at the frontage and medium density um at the rear. Uh, the next item is um for a mobile food vendor, Maria Delatori Alvarado, um, doing business as Antojitos locals. Uh, this would be located at seven zero two I Street. Uh, this um location previously had a mobile food vendor. Uh, this is the location that is at the uh northeast corner of I Street and Seventh Street. Um, El Sabore used to be located at that particular location. They no longer are located there, and so a new mobile food vendor is being proposed to locate at that location. Uh, and then the last item is for a cottage food operator at eighteen seventy-three Loma Linda Circle. Uh, this would be for Brianna Hernandez Mercado, doing business as Bagel Barn. Uh, these public hearings will be held on Wednesday, June twenty-sixth, at six PM here in the council chambers, and that concludes my report.
All right, thank you. Move on to item twelve, city manager report.
Thank you, Mayor, appreciate it. Uh, just want to give a big thank you to the finance staff for all the hard work that they've been putting in these last few months in regards to um doing a transition on over to an ERP system, which just takes an extensive amount of work to be able to get that implemented. Um, trying to transfer the data over from the current ERP system on over to the new ERP system, just a lot of effort, a lot of time that goes into that, so excellent work to them on that. They brought forth the budget and put a lot of work in uh these, this rate study, so um, thank you to them. Vanessa, thank you to all your hard work and your leadership that you put together on the team, and uh, thank you to council um for that. The other thing I'd like to make note of is comment was made tonight, which is a false that about me posting a video. I did not post any videos, so that's a false statement. Um, the other statement that was made is that pickleball is at three million dollars. We did not allocate three million dollars to pickleball. I think we allocated about two point two million dollars, of which the two point two million dollars has not been spent, so that was another false statement that was made tonight. So I'm, I'd like to go to correct that to the public so they're aware, you know, things that are being done um here with the city and with the funding that's there. Um, the other one, it's a really exciting event that we just had this past Saturday, um, our very first ever uh drone light show. Um, it was a very exciting event, and I want to give a big shout out and thank you to the Parks and Rec team um that put on this event. Uh, I think it started around like four thirty, um, and there was I think it started around like 4:30, and there was games that were played there, I think AC, is that correct? A, AC Soccer Club, they had soccer games out there for kids to go out and play at, or Noah Jones Ballpark. There was cornhole was out there, Little Papa Shot, which is a little basketball game that folks have ever played, it's pretty fun, that was out there. And then at the very end, we had, it was movie night, so we showed a movie, and then we had our first ever drone light show. It was really cool, fun event, and got a lot of really good feedback. Folks in the community that really liked it, and they enjoyed it. They've actually got a lot of requests to do it again. So we're really excited about that, and it was really cool because it was animal-friendly as well. So a lot of people were there with their animals, and they got to enjoy the show. So a big thank you for the hard work on getting that done. And that's my report.
All right. Thank you. Move on to Item 13, Report Update. Merced County Association of Governments, MCAG, Peninsula Clean Energy, PC, Measure V Committee, San Joaquin Valley Air Pollution Control District, and Los Banas Downtown Property Improvement. And we'll start with Councilmember Lewis, San Joaquin Valley Air Pollution Control.
I'll report tonight. I'll have my meeting tomorrow.
All right. Thank you. Downtown Association?
Yes, a quick update. July, or sorry, June 29th is going to be our annual fireworks show. That's on Saturday, June 29th. The farmer's market, that was the Thursday before that, on the 27th, has also moved to the 29th in conjunction of, of the fireworks. So there's going to be fresh produce. It's going to be a nice farmer's market as well. At the 4th of July event, there will be a carnival there. Tickets can be purchased at 907 Sixth Street, the Downtown Association office. One of the important things is funding for these fireworks. They actually come from the cell of the fireworks that are to the public. The Downtown Association will have a booth at the Target Shopping Center, so please support. Again, that funding, that those purchases made from that directly fund the firework display that will happen. Downtown Association just want to thank everybody for their continued support and hope to see everybody out on the 29th.
All right. Thank you. Moving on to MCAG and PC, my PC meeting is at the end of this month. The MCAG meeting is tomorrow in Merced, so I'll be in Merced all day tomorrow with that and, and as well as Latco, and I'll have some stuff to report out after that. Move on to Item 14, City Councilmember Reports. Start with Councilmember Lewis.
Thank you. Tonight will be my third request to get the TOT tax audit that was completed a while back. Still haven't heard anything. Mayor, I had asked you to see that we had that come forward to council, and, and it hasn't, so I'm going to make a request again to have the results of the organization that conducted that audit for the TOT tax. And I just want to say, based on one of the items that we heard tonight, doing an audit and changeover in your software has nothing to do with hiring a company. Those are separate things. We hire companies all the time to do things, but it, it should not affect the quality of work that we do or the things that we have to do as far as keeping the city running. So those, those are the only two things I have tonight, and I, I'm hoping that we're going to have that TOT tax audit information very quickly. Thank you.
Councilmember Begonia?
Lambert?
Oh, I'm sorry. Councilmember Lambert?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, guys. I thank the staff for doing an awesome job the last couple of weeks. I think I, I, maybe I didn't clarify earlier about what she was just talking about, the, the audit. I believe, like I asked you before, you have to have be audited continuously. If we would have counseled their prescription and not advanced it, we would not be in a process, being audited would be under RFP, which during that time, we would not be being audited every month. So I see now where we need to be, extend them, and then start the RFP at this time. So thank you. Just wanted to make sure I clarified that. Because if we would have went through with the, with the cancellation or, you know, stopping the contract, then we would not be following our procedure, or we wouldn't be in guidance. Correct? Correct. Other than that, our city has been getting a lot of work done under this council, and it's going to continue to get done with this council. We're staying under the budget. We, we passed a budget with still at our, well above our limit of our, our baseline. And I'm going to keep pushing to get things done that this city needs to get done, to keep moving in, in a forward position. If you don't spend the money, you don't get things done. But we're staying above our threshold that our city is required to stay above. And I am not one of those ones that are just going to sit back and not see anything get done. This city needs to keep moving in the forward position. We have the staff, we have the, the departments that are keep moving us in the right direction at this time, and I'm going to continue to support them. And I will continue to support them until that time. So I think they're doing a wonderful job. The amount of money that we have spent has been a lot, and it's been because we are having to repair a lot of things or fix things that have not been done in the past. So hopefully during the next five years or six years, you know, the next councils or city managers that are up here, they won't have to worry about a, a lot of those overspendings that we're having to deal with now because this council has took it upon themselves to get things back up to date and back in time to move this city forward. That's all I have to say, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Thank you. Councilmember Begonia?
Yeah, so thank you to all the city staff that's been putting in a amazing work. This is definitely a crunch time of the year for them, and they're doing excellent. The drone show was amazing, the whole day was amazing. I'll say, Joe, and whoever put that all together, you proved the naysayers wrong because I had people come to me and say, well, what's a drone show going to look like in Los Banos? And they were very impressed. And just people that didn't, weren't even there, saw it in the sky and were very impressed by it and excited about it. So great job there. So for water rate and wastewater and salt, or waste increase, you know, I understand for some people, it's whatever, no big deal, indifferent to it, and for some people, you know, they protest it, and, you know, nobody's ever excited to pay more for anything. No one's jumping for joy for that. So we do understand why you would protest any increase in anything you pay for. But, you know, I, I like that, you know, we, we're locked in at 2.4% over the next five years, and for families that run on a tighter budget, and that is a big deal for them, at least they, you know, there's no surprises for them. I think it's manageable or increased, and they can plan accordingly for that. So that's a good thing for us, for us as a community, no surprises, no 10% increases, no, no wondering, no guessing. It's there for us to plan for. Thank you, Mayor.
All right. Thank you. All right. Councilmember Jones?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I too attended the drone light show, and I was skeptical at first. I didn't know it was going to be as good as what it was. I even took my dog out there, and I, I was really surprised at how cool it could be. What I really liked at the end was all the kids that were out there, they cheered for it. I mean, they really liked it, and so it tells us, we're going to have to do it again here soon, just because it had a, a great success there. So thank you for staff that put on the drone show. That was very unique, and hope to see more of it. You know, I do have a question on the TOT audit. I was under the impression that the audit was not complete yet because trying to collect, actually, this has been the first time we've done the audit for TOT tax. I think everything else has been on the honor system of them reporting, right? So it's just trying to get these private businesses to turn over their books so we can examine them, right? And so, correct me if I'm wrong, I just don't think that audit has been completed yet, and that's why there's no report on that.
We've received a, an email notification from the agency, Immunity Services, and they are still working on the audit, that is correct.
And that's, I know we talk a lot about audits. That's specifically the TOT?
This is for the transient occupancy tax for auditing hotels, motels, paying the, reporting the first share of their occupancy and the amounts that are to be reported to the city.
And so I'm sure as soon as the audit is complete and the report is compiled, they will, will have a presentation on it. Is that correct?
We, we will connect with them, and once they have a report, once they have completed the audits, and I believe it's part of their contract too, that they were going to pick three, three agencies or three companies to conduct this audit, they are working on completing and finishing up some of that. Some of this job, it's also dependent on the cooperation of the hotels, so it, it takes a little bit of time.
Yeah. Thank you.
I was going to have to cut you off because it's not a, it's a report.
No problem.
Okay. Anything else in your report?
That is all, Mayor.
Okay. All right. Thank you. I'll go last. So, yes, I was out at the, the drone show as well. One thing people have to understand about drone shows versus firework shows, and I heard the comment made, there was, these were $18,000. Typical firework show costs $25,000 to $50,000. So it was much less expensive than what we've seen these grand old shows. The benefit to a drone show, it is pet-friendly as well as friendly to individuals that have sensitivities to loud noises. So anyone with PTSD, I know a lot of our, our military service members and prior first responders, that's a big deal to us. So anyone was able to go out and enjoy it. You, you took your dog. I know my wife took her dog. Dog-friendly event, you don't see that when you get a firework show. And so, again, just the amount of messages and stuff I got, you know, thanking the, the city for doing this. So again, Joe, great job. It was a great event. Only thing I'm going to hold you to is you made me do an interview in shorts, but anyway. Some of the things brought forward us tonight, talking about the Boise case made in public comments about the, the legal ramifications of moving people. We have learned in California, there's 450-plus jurisdictions in California. We are all facing the same homeless crisis. If there's something legally we can do, we will do it. With that being said, we cannot retrieve, steal, remove, take people's property. It is their property. As much as, again, we, we might call it something else, it is their property, and we, we can't do anything with that. However, the plan that we have in place to build this 51 tiny unit community by 2025 is going to help us, and the way it's going to help us is if we have more dwellings and beds than we have the documented number of homeless, we can then change our municipal code to stop encampments in our city limits. So then that gives us some teeth, some consequences we can provide for that. That is the ultimate goal here. Not just put a roof over somebody's head, but provide, provide a permanent housing as well as consequences if you don't utilize it. That is, that's the ultimate goal we're trying to achieve. A question again was brought up about, about the closing of Deansza and the park. You know, I won't speak for everybody up here, but, you know, I will tell you that whatever we got to do to get that park open and hand it back over to the people who really own it, I'm all for it. So if anyone can help me do that, let me know. I'm happy to do that. I know that the, the legal team at Stone, Stonefield and our city attorney have been back and forth in conversations, so they're, they're doing the legal thing. However, if there's something I can do to move it along, let's do it. I'll do it tomorrow. I've said that, I'll keep saying this, the people need their park. That's what, that's what they bought those houses for. And same thing with opening the road. There was a comment made tonight about the homeless manager positions. They were authorized under Greg Wellman. I don't know what the relevancy to that is. The current city managers are actually who hired the two human beings who filled that position, and those are the ones that wrote the grant and received the $11.8 million. So I, I don't know what, what that was in regards to. The, the questions and comments about cyberbullying, yes, cyberbullying is definitely a, a real thing. However, there's limitations to what local law enforcement resources are for that. I would recommend there's, there's other uses. You can actually go online to something called CALSTAS, California State Threat Assessment System, and you can look that up and, and report that as well. And then the, the minutes on the website, I'm asking our, our city manager to look into what we have to do to correct anything on the website. I think that is it. All right. With that being said, I'll, except, yeah. So at this time, we're going to go into closed session. Do we need a motion for that? Okay. So we're going to move on to Item 15, Closed Session Conference with Real Property Negotiations Pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.8. Property located west of the wastewater treatment plant approximately one mile north of Highway 152, Los Banas, California. Approximately 321.7 acres. City negotiator, city manager, Panero, city attorney, Vaughn, Community Economic Development Director, Elms. Negotiation parties, Maryland Properties, Inc., on our negotiations, purchase price and terms of sale, and we'll report out after closed session. We're back from closed session. There's no reportable action from the closed session item, except a motion for adjournment. Councilmember Jones?
Second.
Councilmember Lambert?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes adjourned 9:10. All right. With that being said, I'll, except, yeah.